Oh, I gotta go get my headphones. No, I got earbuds here somewhere.
All right, welcome, welcome. We will call our work session to order.
So invite Zoom room council chambers invite accept.
Invite Zoom room council chambers invite accept.
This is the city council meeting for February 10th, 2021. We have, yes, all seven council members present as soon as I allow David Pack to participate. There we go. All seven members of the council are present in one form or another. You will notice that we are not reading a notice of emergency declaration this afternoon, this evening. And that is because you are welcome to attend City Hall in person now to participate in the meeting. If you would like to, there's obviously some health order requirements to meet if you do that, like maintaining social distance and wearing a mask and stuff like that. Again, you may attend in person, obviously join the webinar if you're listening to this. You probably have figured that part out or joined by phone. In any case, welcome, welcome. We're going to delve right into the work session and the first item on the work session is an economic development annual strategic plan update. By Mr. Chris Pengra. Chris, you are with us. The time is yours.
Thank you, Council Chair and Council. Appreciate everyone's time. I hope you like the long title. As you can see, this is an annual update, so we'll just jump in with this. The annual update is really just a nod to the fact that you guys will be seeing an annual update from me each year. That kind of lays out what our strategic priorities are in economic development. And in the future, you'll be seeing that in January. We'll get into that just a little bit more, but let's just jump right into the next slide and kind of talk about our strategic priorities. These are the goals that have driven the strategic actions that we've put together for this calendar year. And we are basing this on a calendar year, but I don't expect that these strategic goals will change too much from year to year, but they're by no means static. They can change if they need to. And I'm going to walk through them just very briefly. They're, by the way, these are not listed in order of importance, but the first one is really retail opportunities that we will pursue. Let's see, we lost the, there we go. So we want to develop retail opportunities that make a meaningful contribution, both to the city's financial outcomes. And then also to the kind of elevate the quality of life in the entertainment opportunities that exist for the residents. The second goal is to compete nationally for the highest value projects that really can be found anywhere. And it says nationally, but we probably want to be looking at that as an international play as well. We're interested in drawing investment for our community that is both large in terms of the capital for the projects, because that generates larger tax increment. We also want high paying jobs and high quality jobs and lots of them if possible. The third goal is we want to earn the reputation, and I say earn intentionally, this is something that takes work, but I think it's well worth the effort. We want to earn the reputation as a city that takes exceptional care of its business community. There are multiple reasons for that. We'll discuss that as we go along the presentation, but the next one is we want to elevate our brand within the state as an economic development department that really is an authority on how to do economic development effectively. You guys have probably heard me say we are in the top 1.2% of the largest municipalities or incorporated places anywhere in the United States. The way that we operate should reflect that. So we put ourselves up against many large communities in Florida, Texas, California, and we should be operating at a level that's commensurate with the population we have and the level of sophistication I know that we're capable of operating at. The last goal is we want to elevate the value of existing developments. We're really going to do that through the partnerships that we have with a whole host of people and organizations. And we really want to draw new investments into older areas of the city. Obviously, there's a lot of focus that takes place on new growth, but we don't want to forsake the areas that we've got in the city that can use additional investments. So that's the premise for this whole strategic plan. You'll see that these goals are woven into all of the strategic actions that we'll be pursuing this year. And you'll probably see that as we go along. So next slide. Very briefly, the schedule. Can everybody hear me clearly? Is it a microphone issue for me?
A little bit of a microphone issue. It's mostly okay. There's just a little bit of a staticky every now and then. You're mostly all right, though.
Okay. So the schedule for the updates again will look a little bit different in future years. I didn't make the deadline to get this to you in January, so we're still putting the strategic plan together. But in the future, what you'll see is in January, you'll see an updated strategic plan that I'll present to you. And then you'll also have progress updates, which will go over two things, and that'll be at the end of each quarter on the calendar year. And so during those progress updates, we'll tell you the progress we've made towards our strategic activities that we're looking at. And we'll also tell you all of the stuff that's not contemplated in the strategic plan. We've got a lot of things as a department that we do that aren't contemplated in the strategic plan, but is a normal course of business. Warrant us keeping a short account with the council and giving you frequent updates. If you guys desire to have a calendar of updates a little more frequently, we can certainly make that accommodation as we move along. But this is kind of what I've laid out there for now, and we can see how this works out. Next slide. Next, okay, there we go. So we broke into strategic priorities. By the way, we put together a comprehensive list of everything that we could possibly be doing within economic development that we thought would that would move the ball down the field, that would add value and have some meaningful impact on the city. There were about 60 individual action items that we thought we could take. And so as we tried to narrow those down, we made some judgment calls on what to cut and what to add. But we really put them into these four buckets. So first one is organizational priorities, and this is two things. One is really items that are activities that we thought would help us to be more efficient, more effective as a department. Or things that we, when we looked at it, we said, you know, this is something that we can't not do. The impact is too big for us to ignore. So we really need to do this thing. And we'll get into those. We'll get into each of these actually. The next two are really kind of the bread and butter of what we do as an economic development organization. It's business development and business care, and that's exactly what it sounds like. And the next one is RDA and revitalization efforts, which speaks to reinvestment in existing areas of the community. And then the last one is promote the city. How can we leverage our resources by building a strong reputation outside of West Jordan and within the state so that we get other people kind of singing our praises and doing a lot of our marketing work for us without us having to spend a lot of money to go out externally. So it's a way to draw investments by promoting the city through good old fashioned networking, I guess. So let's move to the next slide. So here's our organizational priorities that we established. We want to, again, keep short accounts with council. We've been listening and it's very clear that each of the councilmen members have placed a priority on economic development. I hear that you guys want to know what's going on, so we want to make sure we're giving you those updates. That's why we put that calendar together. And by the way, as we, I'll leave room for questions at the end, but if you guys want to suggest anything different on that calendar, we're open to that. The website. In economic development, there are a lot of people who use the website, the economic development portion of the website to get information about what opportunities look like in the city. And we've got some work to do there. I know that Toni and her team are working on the website update, and I think she has some news about that. We will be working with the communications team to update that hopefully soon. But that's something that we fully expect will be accomplished in 2021. And that'll be a big win. We are going to, in fact, we have been participating in the general plan update, so I've attended each of those meetings with the general plan committee. And I've offered myself as a resource to any of the committee members to make sure that if they have questions, they're welcome to ask either by phone or by email. And I've given a brief presentation, maybe not so brief presentation to them on economic development. And the key is this, as they're going about the process of updating the general plan, we want to make sure that they have insight as to how that may impact economic development opportunities within the city. And we want to make sure that they have the ability to get that information if they do have questions. The next one, the inland port. The inland port is kind of the preeminent authority on freight movement within the state of Utah. And as our industrial development continues to move forward in the city, especially with the southwest quadrant development, we want to create a strong partnership with them and make sure that we're developing a strategy that we can really leverage their strengths and maybe some of the unique tools that they have available to them. And I do have a strong relationship with the executive team at the inland port. So I have not reached out to them since I've been with West Jordan, but that'll be forthcoming. We don't know what that looks like, but as that develops, we'll be in communication with council, so you guys can weigh in on that. CRM software, some of you may be familiar with this. Specifically, we've gone through the due diligence process of looking at different options for CRM or customer relationship management software. The premise for this is that we want continuity of communications. As we're talking to our businesses, we want a record. As we're offering help and assistance to our businesses, we want a record. As we're collecting information about what the challenges exist with those businesses, who to contact, we want a record. There's also other things that are valuable to us through the software such as tracking leads and making sure nothing's slipping through the cracks. We're following up with every business that has a need that's communicated to us. This helps us be more efficient. And then the last one, and this is a big one, you're all aware of this, I won't spend much time, but doing legwork to identify what the infrastructure plan is for the southwest quadrant, making sure that we're doing that work so that we can prepare ourselves for really winning some of those large projects that we talked about. Next slide. Business development and business care. I'm going to skip the first one. I'll come back to that. We are putting together an annual small business survey. In fact, it's already been completed. We haven't sent that out to the business community, but this is meant for all businesses, small and large. And the intention is that we want to know what challenges they're experiencing. What are the things that they're doing well with? Really, it's just an open line of communication so that we can know what's going on with the business community and have a touch point so that we can offer them assistance if they need it. That's an important, it's an important tool to get that feedback, and it's something that goes a very long way. Retail recruitment. Here again, we've been listening to each of the council members, and I will say this, generally speaking, retail recruitment at the macro level, something we're not going to spend a tremendous amount of time in. And what I mean by that is this, when someone develops a retail shopping center, it's not our responsibility to fill and find leases for every single one of those areas or those storefronts. The leasing agents and the developer is going to do that. Where we are going to focus our effort, however, on the things that we know are going to add above average value to the city's financial success and to the quality of life for the residents. So listening to council members, some of the things that you guys have communicated to us have been state liquor store, which I'll tell you, we're currently engaged with a representative from the liquor store and working on finding a time that we can schedule a meeting. We've had some challenges with the change in administration there, but we are working on that. Costco, we are in communication with the broker and that's ongoing. I'm not saying that we're going to get a Costco. I'm simply saying we're in communication. We're going to continue to work on these, okay? Steakhouse, Trader Joe's here again, currently in communication with the broker. The last communication was in Q4 of 2020. Entertainment venues, this is a big one. I know, Kaylee, this is one that you've mentioned a couple of times. We're actively pursuing a couple of different entertainment venues and working on a couple of different projects. Those are really, we don't know exactly what will happen with those. It's an exploratory process, so, but we are working on that. Home Depot or Lowe's, I would say in there, with Home Depot, we've been in active engagement with the broker and a representative from Home Depot. And as recently as April of 2020, we do know that Home Depot had a board meeting discussing potential future site for West Jordan. So Paul's been great working on that and most of these, mind you. So we'll continue on those efforts as well. And then a furniture retailer, which we're actively engaged in conversations with the broker and a developer about that. And a truck stop, which we haven't taken any action on yet, but there are some possibilities there. All right, sorry, I spent a little time, a little more time on retail than intended, but I'm going to jump back to the business retention and expansion. I cannot possibly overstate this. The value of investing and connecting with our businesses, especially with our large businesses, our major employment centers is so important, and most people focus on the business retention aspect of this, but not the expansion. Conversely, there are a whole lot of economic development departments that focus exclusively on business recruitment and forget all about the BRD part. I can't state that clearly enough. Upwards of 80% of the new investments made in any community come in as a direct correlation from a business that you already have in your community. Either bringing a supplier in that works with an existing business or an expansion project that comes from an existing business. So we really want to dig into this. Not saying we want to forsake business recruitment, but this is so important. So what we're doing, there's three components to the BRE program. The first one is working with ECU for the Know the Customer Initiative. We've currently met with 11 of our largest businesses. We've got five meetings scheduled with with large businesses in West Jordan. And then we're actively in communication with an additional 11 to schedule those meetings. And what these are basically, it's about an hour long survey, and we walk through everything, A to Z. How did your business start? How long have you been here? What challenges do you have? Have you been impacted by COVID? How many employees do you have? What operations do you have in other cities or states? What vendors or suppliers do you use that we could help you by bringing them in? These have been so incredibly valuable as we've gone through these. And with every one of these surveys, we're working, we're talking directly to executives in the business. So VP level or above or C-suite, we're talking to those individuals in the business so that we can get straight to the decision makers and know what's really going on with the business. The other two things, and then I'll move on. The other two things with this is business visitation, which is an important way for us to just go in and visit businesses, know what they're doing and how they're doing it. And more importantly, just letting them know that we care about them. We haven't done anything with that this year because of COVID. Remains to be seen if we will be able to, but that is something that we will absolutely be doing as COVID kind of relents and we can get back to business as normal. And then the, sorry, I lost my place. Well, I'll stop there and we can move on to the next slide. So RDA and revitalization, I'm going to make up a little time here and kind of blaze through these. Airport planning and development is well underway. A vendor's been selected. Paul has been doing a superb job of shepherding that program, working directly with Salt Lake City. Really strong partnership and relationship. They understand our concerns. We want to be able to develop the land within our borders that belongs to Salt Lake City for the regional airport. We're having active conversations about that as well as what will happen with the lease that we have on the soccer fields. And so that process is going very well, and we're kind of on the front end of that project right now. Couple other housekeeping items. We need to update the RDA bylaws. They were last updated in 2012, so there's some work that needs to be done there. That's really just to protect us from a legal perspective. We want to make sure that we're doing what is reflected in the bylaws and operating as the bylaws state we're operating as an RDA. We also want to create a strategic plan. We've got 11, I believe, different areas within the RDA. We want to put together a strategic plan that is complimentary to this strategic plan to make sure that the RDA is moving in the same direction, that we have a plan for each of these individual areas. And so that'll be a major undertaking that we'll take on this year. We've been having communications already with UTA. Regarding the southwest quadrant, we've got major employers that have employees that are taking tracks to get to their businesses. We need a way to get people from tracks to the businesses, and the most obvious is robust routes, and that needs to happen. We've had conversations with UTA about that already. I believe that there's a bit of a hurdle to get over there, but we're going to keep at that, make sure that we keep banging on at door so that we can find solutions to that. It's meaningful to our employers and that's a big deal, frankly. There is the TOD agreement with Bangator Station, so this is for Jordan Valley TOD. We're in process with that already. We've got proposed language and we'll be presenting that to the developer. The intent is simply to secure, put more teeth into the agreement to get less of the high density residential and incorporate more of the retail and office development as part of that project, so that's something we're actively working on right now. Pursue city center redevelopment. This is a big one. This one that Paul's put a lot of work into. I know a lot of other folks in the city. And very briefly, it's a big project. It's an elephant, and we've got to start taking bites at it. It's not going to happen overnight, but if we're not putting intentional effort into it, it's never going to happen. So we may as well start now and start making incremental progress. You guys should expect, we'll work with with planning staff to hopefully bring a concept plan to you for feedback so that we can start having conversations with developers and see if we can make progress on that project. And then the last one for RDA and revitalization is the
Excuse me, Chris. Sorry, on the city center. I don't know, a year or two ago, we sat through a very large slide deck about plans for that. Is any of that being used or are we going to see something yet again, brand new?
No, you're not going to see anything brand new. So you have reviewed the plans, and I'm hoping I'm not stepping in it here, but because this preceded me, but my understanding is you've reviewed the plans, but you haven't adopted it so that we can take the next incremental step and start moving forward. So that's what you'll be seeing is something for adoption.
Great. And hopefully Melissa and Kelvin, the new people, haven't seen that slide presentation. They didn't get that opportunity. But a real condensed version would probably be really good for them.
Good. We'll work through that, Councilmember Whitelock, and we look forward to bringing that to you this year for sure. The last one, I feel like I could probably spend a lot more time than I'm going to on this, but you all have heard me say we have got such a unique opportunity in West Jordan with the southwest quadrant. I've listened very carefully in my communication with each of you to what's important with that area. We need to put a stake in the ground. We've got developers actively interested in developing the area. I believe that it's incumbent upon us to really develop a very strong vision for what that area is going to become. I've put a significant amount of effort into just kind of visioning what this could be. And I'm very anxious to share those ideas with you and also with Corbin and the mayor. So I expect that that will be happening in the next couple of weeks. I'll start to roll that out so that we can wrap our arms around it and start moving together in a particular direction so that I can communicate clearly with these developers that we're already talking to. So I'm excited about that. Next slide. The last is really promotion of the city. I can tell you right now, as far as our relationship with ECU, Paul, myself, and even Weston at this point, we're on a first name basis with virtually everybody at ECU. In fact, I consider most of them to be friends. We've got an exceptionally strong relationship, which there is a lot of value in that. You will hear communities talk about ECU and question the value that they get out of that relationship. And I'm a firm believer that you get as much value out of these relationships as the effort you put into them. If we are actively engaged with ECU, we receive tremendous value out of them because we're clear and we're present. And they do a lot for us, and I think we offer mutual benefit to them. Go Ed is under new leadership with Dan Hemmer. We have already met. Good. We'll work through that, Councilmember Whitelock, and we look forward to bringing that to you this year for sure. The last one, I feel like I could probably spend a lot more time than I'm going to on this, but you all have heard me say we have got such a unique opportunity in West Jordan with the Southwest quadrant. I've listened very carefully in my communication with each of you to what's important with that area. We need to put a stake in the ground. We've got developers actively interested in developing the area. I believe that it's incumbent upon us to really develop a very strong vision for what that area is going to become. I've put a significant amount of effort into just kind of visioning what this could be. And I'm very anxious to share those ideas with you and also with Corbin and the mayor. So I expect that that will be happening in the next couple of weeks. I'll start to roll that out so that we can wrap our arms around it and and start moving together in a particular direction so that I can communicate clearly with these developers that we're that we're already talking to. So I'm excited about that. Next slide. The last is is really promotion of the city. I can tell you right now, as far as our relationship with E D C U, Paul, myself and even Weston at this point, we're on a first name basis with virtually everybody at E D C U. In fact, I consider most of them to be friends. We've got an exceptionally strong relationship, which there is a lot of value in that. You will hear communities talk about E D C U and question the value that they get out of that relationship. And I'm a firm believer that you get as much value out of these relationships as the effort you put into them. If we are actively engaged with E D C U, we receive tremendous value out of them because we're clear and we're present. And they do a lot for us, and I think we offer mutual benefit to them. Go Ed is under new leadership with Dan Hemmer. We have already met with Dan and had a great meeting with him as well as existing staff that we've already known. So we're going to continue to develop that relationship and seek ways that we can align what we're doing in West Jordan with state objectives and state goals. And if we can offer mutual benefit to them, we're going to do so and and try to leverage that relationship. Those two relationships are so important because they have access to the the top site selectors in the nation to, you know, they go on international recruitment trips. There's so many opportunities for us to extend our reach without expending any additional money that those relationships are important to not ignore. The next item is economic development branding. This is quite simply put, having a strong and polished identity that we can present to the world out there. That's done through, you know, a logo which will we will work on, but we already have one. It's basically the city logo that says economic development under it. And that works fine. We might look internally if there's something more we can do there. But having polished documents that all point back to West Jordan with a consistent colorway and and just very polished with the information that we need to present to externally to site selectors and and a whole host of other other entities. We want to, we want to show well. And so that's what that's all about. And then the last is we want to actively maintain priority relationships. There is a long list of those priority relationships and what we're working on right now is identifying the frequency of communication for those that we're not in constant communication with and assigning primary and secondary responsibility for maintaining those relationships within our department. So we're actively working on that as well. Next slide. And that that's really the end. There's a lot of other things going on within the department, but I know I'm about one minute away from thirty minutes, which is ten minutes longer than I wanted to go. But I'll I'll take a breath and entertain any questions you guys have.
If anybody on the council has questions, comments, or other why I want to talk about or to Chris, this would be a good time. Jump right in. No need to raise your hand and be called on. It's a workshop.
So Chris, I do have a question on the R D A redoing stuff.
Yes.
Will that involve the council at all or the members that were a part of the? Long ago, I and Alan were the R D A people, but we haven't done anything since Alan left, so I don't know.
Yes, the the council is the R D A board. So it's purely housekeeping, Councilmember Whitelock. It's basically setting meeting times and dates. Basically, it's it's pretty outdated. So it's housekeeping, but it's it's nothing overly onerous that you need to be concerned about.
Okay, thank you.
I'll I'll just jump in there since Kayleen asked about the R D A. I know a couple of us had conversations about this the other day. But we do have some R D A. We do have some R D A money that's based on some of that tax increment financing and everything else. And I don't think, well, we didn't do anything with an R D A the entire, as far as I can tell, except for changing some money or anything around in the entire calendar year of twenty twenty. And so my, I I would look to to you and to some other people to see what we can do as an R D A to help those areas that we do have R D A and we have some money so that we can move forward in those areas.
I'm glad you brought that up, Councilmember Green. So we have there's a group of us, including Corbin and the and Jeremy Olson, myself and a few others. We've taken a look at those funds and we've put together a list of potential capital projects that would invest the R D A funds in a meaningful way that would help us to extend and create additional tax increment. So we're looking at how to prioritize those funds and what we should be doing with those. I expect that you, as a council, will be presented with that. There's is a, you know, believable over three million dollars that's that's available to be programmed, but we are looking actively at that. So it's not unnoticed.
Anybody else going once? Twice. Okay. Thank you, Chris, for your presentation and update on that. We're going to move to item B quickly here. We're going to talk about helipads because Bill Gates's new house in West Jordan has got some questions. Councilmember Green.
Thank you. Alan, can you you want to go to the next slide? So let me just give you a little bit of introduction and background. We we talked this slightly about remarks, so we can put it on the agenda. In a in another part of my life, I actually am semi partly kind of employed by a law firm and have worked on some issues with at least one community in Utah and a second one on the periphery who have started to face serious issues with helicopter operations in their city. One was helipads, another one is just helicopter operations. As I've looked at this, and if you go back, Summit County had a serious problem with helicopters in particularly the time around Sundance Film Festival. Alpine City has looked at this issue. And as I mentioned, some other cities in Utah currently struggle with helicopter operations and and helipads. As a local government, we would actually have control over the land. The FAA has jurisdiction over the airspace, so we can't control where they fly, but we could control where they land. Currently, we have nothing in place. But as I looked at some of the problems that a couple of the cities that have addressed this, if we if we wait till it comes up, it may be too late. And so the the question is, is, and I think you can move to the next next slide. The the question is, do we want to proceed with a helipad ordinance? Do we want to look at this and say, where do we want the helipad? If we want a helipad ordinance in West Jordan or not? And so with that, if there's any questions, if not, I would turn to Council Chair Jacob to do a procedural vote of some sort to determine if the council wants to proceed. If we don't want to proceed, then we can just drop the topic and move on.
So Kelvin?
Yes.
I already have a lot of helicopters that land around me. They land at the hospital. They land at the airport. Um, I'm guessing you're you're wanting to know if we want these to be allowed at personal residences?
Or businesses, yes.
Businesses, okay.
Yeah, because I mean, we do have the helipad. Right now, we have the the helicopters that are landing at the Army Aviation Facility at Airport Number Two or Salt Lake Valley Regional Airport, I guess is its true name now. We do have the the helipad at Jordan Valley Hospital. But yes, you're correct. And do we want, do we want to regulate helipads in any of the other areas of the city? Knowing that the the city has large businesses, larger businesses coming that people might want to use helicopters to get back and forth from the airport. Or as as the city becomes more affluent, having, I've actually seen the case studies and of where residents are buying helicopters and they want to put a helipad in their backyard. And, you know, and and the FAA rules allow it as long as it meets some certain criteria. And in fact, some of them don't even have to be approved by the FAA. But it it's one of those things that, yes, is that something that we want to be proactive to look at where we want helipads in business or or prohibit them from residential zones or any of those other kinds of things. And so yeah, that's what that's what I'm looking for. If we don't want to proceed, then we can, like I said, we could move on. And if if we do want, then we can have a slight discussion here in the in the next few minutes on what we would like to see in an ordinance. And and then we could, then we can start to to draft one for adoption here in the the coming months.
So Oh, go ahead, Kayleen. Then I'll ask my question.
So so I'm assuming the concerns and and maybe you can share that with me, but I'm assuming the concerns of Park City and Alpine are noise, wind, and possible wrecks. Are there any other things that that would be a concern?
I'd say noise is probably, of of all the concerns that that I've seen with what I what I've worked on, it's noise, probably followed by the, yeah, the 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 wash of the the blades. I haven't much worry about anybody worrying about whether it crashes or not.
Well, they probably didn't have a plane recently crash near their home.
Really high level, though. Let's keep this. Do we want?
I would be okay. I would be okay knowing that. I'd be okay doing something.
Okay.
I have a question real quick. Currently, with the way things sit, could someone land a helicopter in their backyard without any penalty?
I couldn't.
I'm just saying, I mean, you you're saying we don't have anything. So could somebody technically land a helicopter in their backyard if they wanted to?
Technically, you can land a helicopter anywhere somebody has has permission to land. So if you wanted to land in on the Copper Hills football field, if you got permission from Jordan School District, you can land there. What we're talking about is the permanent, the permanent fixation of helipads that would that would literally allow for the landing and parking of a helicopter.
Go ahead, Chad.
Well, Councilmember Jacob, you just mentioned that we want to keep it at high level. I was just thinking east of Bangator, I can't think of anywhere where a helipad could go. So I'm not too concerned about east of Bangator. So when I think about helipads, we'd probably be looking at what's going to happen west of Bangator or west of Mountain View because at this point I can't see helicopter or anybody building the helicopter pad anywhere on the eastern side of Bangator.
Except for maybe a business, but yeah, I mean, do so is is anybody opposed to having this discussion? Let's put it that way. Just give me a head nod or a shout out if you don't want to have this discussion. All right. So I think there's enough in favor of having this discussion. We'll schedule this for a future workshop. Is that cool? Oh, roll forward. Okay, let's see.
Well, and we've got, we've got a couple of minutes before we before we
We want to get into budget as soon as we can here.
What's that?
We want, we got budget next, so we want to get into that.
Yeah, that's that's I was going to say, we've got about five minutes. We did have this slide. Where do we want to allow heli helipads to be built? Airport overlay zone is probably the obvious. Any other areas, distance from homes? Obviously, hospitals would be exempt, the military facility probably be exempt. Do we want any construction standards? I'm just willing to hear any comments over the next couple of minutes that I could start drafting at least an outline of an ordinance. Anybody got any ideas?
Well, I'm okay with businesses.
Yeah, me too with businesses. I know I live on a half acre, but I doubt my neighbors would be very pleased with having coming and going helicopter noise and wash. Obviously, there'd need to be a a time, you know, where where you can't do it before a certain time or after a certain time. And I I think neighbors would be worried about safety, not just the the noise, but also safety of, you know, I assume there'd have to be a setback, some clearance with trees and power lines and I guess, just like any other issue that we're tackling, you know, what are the pros? What are the cons? What have other places done? And what have they seen in success and failures that we can learn from them? Thank you.
I don't like the idea of them in residential areas. I mean, I just just some of the things that Councilmember Pack just brought up, the safety concerns alone would be. So that'd be definitely something we needed to discuss.
Sounds like you've got more or less a blank slate.
Run with it.
Things in there that I've made some notes like result, no residential areas, some safety concerns. Those kind of things, I think I with with those, with the businesses, times of operation, some of those kind of things. I think I could probably start to put something together that we could bring back for a workshop later in the future. And then probably get into the last details before we look at it, if that's okay with the the rest of the council.
Sounds good. Sounds good. Thank you. Let us fly right into the next object, next item on the agenda. See what I did there. And this will be a budget update from Denise Stack. We are going to look at general fund revenue. Denise, you should be promoted and ready to go.
Great. Thanks, Council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Great. All right. So um, this is going to be our first workshop for our fiscal year twenty twenty two budget. It's hard to believe that we're already there. Doesn't feel like that long ago. We were just doing this. But we're going to go over some of the estimates that we're preparing for the general fund revenues tonight. So we'll just take a few minutes. The first slide here shows you ongoing revenue. So we've been teaching and educating on the difference between ongoing and one time for about eighteen months now, and I think you know the difference, but ongoing is things that we use for our regular operations and one times are spikes that are unusual in nature, and we'll go through those in a minute as well. This is the history of the general fund revenues for West Jordan for ongoing revenue. And you can see from two thousand sixteen to what we're preparing now in two thousand twenty two, we've had considerable growth, which is great. But I think it's really important for us to identify where that growth came from. So you can see we were pretty consistent in revenue except for some sales tax growth from sixteen to two thousand eighteen. And at that point, the council adopted a property tax increase to support an increase in hiring more public safety first responders, so firefighters and police officers. And that tax increase is about two point five million dollars. So that bumped our revenue up in addition to the sales tax growth that occurred during that year. We've been really fortunate, too, that just the very next year in twenty twenty, the state legislature in two thousand eighteen added an additional piece to sales tax. We call it the fourth quarter of a quarter dedicated to transportation and road maintenance. That new sales tax was distributed to the counties for the first year and then was distributed to the cities as it should have been starting July first of twenty twenty. So that brought in an additional two point one million dollars to the city of ongoing revenue in sales tax. So again, we jumped up a little bit there. And then last year in our budget, as we were budgeting, we saw a demand or a need for some additional ongoing revenue, and we decided to implement the utility transfer, which brought in another two and a half million dollars of revenue. So that journey from fifty to fifty eight million dollars wasn't so much just growth in property tax or value anyway, in property tax value or in sales tax revenue or other revenues. It was really that we identified some new funding sources that could assist our city in providing additional services that were needed. Property tax for public safety, the new sales tax for more road maintenance, and the utility transfer was necessary for us to balance our budget last year. This year, we're gonna, we're estimating some growth in sales tax and some changes elsewhere. We're going to go through those in just a few minutes. So we're going to estimate fifty nine point two million dollars in ongoing revenues. Alan can go to the next slide. Thank you. All right, this is a chart just to show you what our our one time revenues were and where they came from and how we differentiate between ongoing and one time. One time revenues, you can see the little, the smaller bars in sixteen, seventeen, and nineteen tended to do with tended to do with permits that were in excess of what we would consider our baseline permits. Um we typically, over the last five years, get about three point one million dollars of revenue from our permitting um activities, but sometimes we'll get a large project in. So in two thousand nineteen, there was the big Amazon project that brought in some additional revenue. Ongoing, we have some big developments. It'll be bringing in some additional residential permitting, which may, again, make that jump go up. What we don't want to do, Council, is we don't want to count on that revenue because it changes so tremendously year to year. So we count on a baseline in the ongoing, and then anything in addition to that, we kind of call it one time, and it would end up going to some things that were purchases one time, not ongoing. In two thousand eighteen, we sold land for six point eight million dollars, which funded um the reserves that we're holding in the Capital Projects Fund for the Community Arts Center. And then in two thousand twenty, we used some of the on, or I'm sorry, some of the one-time revenue came from our sales tax pandemic effect. So when people were buying a lot of groceries and toilet paper, um and then transitioned to buying home improvement project uh supplies. Um we identified that to be about one point two million dollars, so something more than what would normally have happened during that year. We received one point eight million dollars in CARES Act funds, which assisted us in getting PPEs and um other things for the city to respond to COVID. And then we had a legal settlement that we were required to put a money away for um as a judgment came out, and after an appeal, um that judgment settlement came down, and so we were able to recover those funds um and put them back in. We would consider that one time, so that only happens once. In two thousand twenty-one, we're got five point two million dollars of CARES Act money, and we believe that the pandemic effect of continued um purchasing from our homes uh is about one point three million dollars. We do it, we are taking the behavior changes into effect, so we are increasing sales taxes with some growth, because we think some of that's gonna continue just because of the behavior change. But the majority of um probably shopping or not going on vacations or not having any leisure activities um likely are going to bring that sales tax revenue down over the next year as that vaccine starts becoming more widely distributed. Any questions about one-time revenue? Okay, let's go to the next slide. So this is what we think our budget's gonna look like for next year, and just like you do in your homes, you look at what your annual revenue is going to be, and then you can kind of set up your budget. We're doing the same thing. Instead of letting expenses try and drive revenue, we're driving the revenue first. We're saying, this is what our budget is, and now expenses are gonna have to fit in this box. Um and so our general fund revenues are going to be about thirty percent in property tax. Um that's fourteen, seventeen point, almost five million dollars. Then our sales tax is twenty-three point four. Our franchise taxes, which are from utilities, um from uh cable, hotel room tax, um and there's one more, cable, utility, telecom, that was the other one, um from telecommunications. And then our fines and fees are kind of everything. So that's permitting, that's all kinds of charges for services, um our fines from the courts. Other revenue tends to be interest income, and then that transfer in, which is pretty important right now to our general fund, is from our utility funds to the city, similar to what that franchise tax is uh to other utilities. You can see the makeup here. We're still pretty dependent on our sales tax revenue. Uh a good financial structure is about a third, a third, and a third. Um we're pretty dependent on sales tax, but not um not outrageously so. So we're we're getting there. Next slide.
Denise, can you go back one? The franchise, the franchise tax. I think this threw me off. I just want to clarify, that's seven million, two hundred and seventy thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a missing zero.
I was gonna say, I think there's a zero.
I was looking at it going, why is this so short? But thank you, you're right, there's a missing.
That's why I just wanted to make sure that the franchise tax was more than the 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 transfer fund. That's what.
Yeah, it definitely is.
Okay, that's what I wanted to verify. Thank you.
All right, sales tax. So this is kind of some history on the sales tax and where we were actually and what those resources were. So that first line is the one percent sale option sales tax. It's the regular bread and butter for all municipalities. Um and it was without that new additional tax, and that, you kind of need to see that away from everything else so that you really understand where the growth has come from. So you can see that from seventeen to eighteen, um seventeen's obviously hidden, but that we had about seven point two percent growth in sales tax. Those were some good years. Before that, we had some double-digit growth. Um and that's pretty natural. Typically, sales tax will creep up um in growth, and then it will kind of level out and come back down again and normalize. Um in two thousand nineteen, we saw five percent growth from the previous year. And then in two thousand twenty, that growth slowed down to about two and a half percent. Um when we take out those fluctuations from what we believe happened and we normalize growth, um that's how, that's kind of how we we had an analysis on how to take what kind of money out for pandemic effect. It's also the year we got that transportation sales tax. So you can see that's there. So that two point four represents the top line only. I want you to make sure that you don't go, well, that's more than two point four there. Um I just want you to see what that top line is doing, because that's really where's where it's being driven for our sales tax revenue. Twenty twenty-one, we've uh we've kept our budget flat with what we kept, what we received in two thousand twenty. Um it's a good strategy for us to do that and to not count on um on that money uh before it comes in. So if sales tax would take a slight um backward step, we weren't anticipating too much. That transportation sales tax is really dedicated to transportation, and so we analyze um what the cost of road maintenance and streets, the streets department is to the city, and we ensure that that transportation tax, if we did not spend that much on our streets activities and public works activities supporting our roads, that the remainder of it would be transferred over into the Class B road funds and used for um construction projects as well. However, our streets department and the regular road maintenance that we do out of the general fund more than exceeds the transportation sales tax revenue we got. And then we're anticipating the pandemic effect for two thousand twenty-one, but we're not anticipating anything in two thousand twenty-two yet. Um we will wait to see what happens with the vaccine. The um predictions seem to be that the summer should normalize our behavior somewhat. So we're hopeful. Next slide. The franchise tax. So um this is a bit of a challenge for the city. Uh franchise taxes is a considerable portion of our revenue stream. Um if you look at it, it's uh about thirty-five percent of our property tax revenue, right? I mean, when we have seventeen million dollars there and seven million here. Um where it comes from is the six percent franchise tax on the utilities like um Rocky Mountain Power, um Questar Gas. They all charge those on our power fees. And then that comes back to the city um directly from those uh printed or from those vendors. Um telecom's the same way, and those are on your honor. Um it's very difficult for you to audit a telecom company because they're all over the world and nation. Um utilities get audited on a regular basis by the state auditors, but the rest of this um telecom and cable tax are very difficult, and it really tends to be an honor system. Telecom has continued to be reduced in revenue. You can see we're almost at half in just the short five-year period that we're showing you from a million dollars down to five hundred and seventy-five thousand. We continue to see that decrease as um people eliminate their landlines. In fact, new homes, um I think Councilmember Worthen mentioned, don't even have landline ports anymore. Um and so uh we're not receiving the same kind of revenue that cities really have been counting on for many, many years in this telecom franchise tax. Uh cable tax, I think we might, and I I get concerned with this because we may end up with the same trend. Um we're not seeing it decrease too much right now. Um but as streaming services uh continue to move forward, we may see the reduction of people utilizing cable services and going to streaming services. When that occurs, um that revenue will begin to decrease. And then our hotels obviously have suffered a lot this year, but we hope that they'll just bounce right back next year. So we're we're budgeting flat. Increase in franchise tax from what we believe we'll collect this year, um more consistent with what we collected in two thousand twenty.
Denise, I have a really good question on this.
Sure.
The cable tax, uh I asked you about this before that in our budget meeting, and that was uh you you clarified that that's just on the cable TV part of all the services that a cable company like Comcast would provide.
Right.
My my question is, is there any talk about expanding the the cable, the franchise tax on cable to include streaming and data and internet franchise taxes or anything like that? Have you heard of anything like this?
You know, it's an interesting um question, and I have not heard it come up in the legislature, and I believe the reason why is the justification for this as being a franchise tax is that, in essence, they're renting the city's um property to provide their service, because their cable is being, is going through our right-ofways, right? Our roads, our sidewalks, our property. So in essence, their six percent is that rental in as, in instead of really a tax. So they're renting our space.
Right, but they are, but they're only rent, they're renting the same amount of space whether they're streaming data through that, or whether they're streaming a television signal through that, is what I'm saying, so.
That's true. Yeah, if the um.
Like on the one, but not on the other.
Right, as a um fiber optic network versus a cable. Well, I have not heard a lot about it, and I'm not receiving any additional revenue um from fiber optics, so to speak. But I see what you're saying. I don't know. I guess it would depend on if they're having to put in additional infrastructure to support that, or if it's the same infrastructure.
So what about five G, for example, where they've got the the equipment that's sitting on our power poles? Do we get a franchise fee for that?
Um we don't get a franchise fee, but we are allowed to charge them a rental fee for putting them on our poles.
Has that been incorporated somewhere in this budget?
What? I'm going to have to ask um around on that. I'm not sure, but I will ask about that. Has, have you seen them on our poles versus their own poles?
Going back to what was approved by the council earlier, I thought we had to allow for them to be placed on our streetlights and such. I don't know if I've seen them, but if that was coming, I just want to make sure that we're able to recover from having them using our equipment.
Right. Anytime that they use any of our land or equipment, they will be required to put, to give us some sort of monthly fee.
Well, and you know, that that may be something as we talk about in the in the future, uh if if uh somebody like Century Link or Google or anybody is putting fiber optic in that's different than the current cable, uh maybe that's something that we need to address with our legislature uh for the exact same reason. Uh if they're renting, if they're using our rights of way and they're digging up our right-of-way and and traversing over the right-of-way to a a deal with fiber optic networks, maybe it's something that we need to get the legislature to reconsider. So it may be just something that, you know, as as you've brought it up, that we, you know, that uh the mayor's office and Tawny can look at maybe working with future, the legislature on that one to see what the possibility is.
I think there's a lot of municipalities that are really looking at franchise tax as um an antiqu- antiquated um tax, unfortunately, that is going away because of changes in technology, and, you know, we suffer from that. So I think that um there's a lot of of cities that are looking at this, and I can't, I would imagine the league as well.
Mister Chair, if I, can I chime in for one sec too on this question, answer this question? One of the challenges with uh franchise taxes as they relate to telecom and cable in particular are some of the FCC laws as well. It's beyond the state level issue. Um I believe there's federal preclusions on taxing internet access and data access, and so I think that's why the cable portion of your, the cable TV portion of your bill has the tax. The internet service provider portion of your bill, whether that be uh your cable TV bill or your data portion of your cell phone bill doesn't get the tax, I think, is because of FCC restrictions.
That would be good to know.
We should own the airspace. All right, the next slide, please. All right, this is kind of um comparing all of our fines and fees, um that large eight point three million number that you saw. Majority, obviously, of our fees are at, is ambulance services provided. Um so you can see that on the top line. What I put in red on here was where things kind of dipped, and it was interesting in two thousand twenty, um I gave the chief a hard time. I said, what happened to ambulance revenues during a pandemic? Um but as you know, people don't want to call for service unless absolutely necessary because of, they didn't want to expose themselves anymore than. So we did see some change in activity in ambulance services in two thousand twenty. Um we'll see where what's going on in two thousand twenty-one. I don't quite have enough revenue stream yet to really predict that yet, but we believe that we'll be in bud, on budget for fees overall. Uh Development Services is doing very well um with uh about four million dollars of budget. We're gonna bring down that down to about three point nine, where I, where I said we have a baseline. Development Services isn't just permits, three point one of it is permits, but anything in excess of three point one tends to be other kinds of things like um uh inspections or code enforcement or those kinds of things. Um public works revenue and events revenue you see drop in two thousand twenty-one because we didn't do our events, but we anticipate bringing back our events, even even when we are not going to be able to uh have as many participants at those events. Um Tawny has, is is going to be adding an event, which I believe that she talked to you about recently when she reported. And then um our police fees, about a third of those had to do with the uh contract that we had with Murray City for animal control services, which they discontinued at the end of two thousand twenty and went with Salt Lake County for those services. So we saw a decrease in revenue there, but we saw an offsetting decrease in expense as well. So while that became net neutral, it's important to understand where that change came from. And fines and forfeitures have tended to be pretty flat. Um I believe, though, next year it's probably gonna be reduced just because we haven't been able to do much with the courts right now. And um there's a delayed effect on when those fines are paid. So we we brought that bad uh expectation down a bit. And then we're not counting on any one-time revenue at this point in time. So we'll see a little bit of growth next year, but not much. This is kind of that big picture, that chart that I just showed you, and comparing um our actuals from two thousand twenty and then our budget in two thousand twenty-two and our budget in two thousand twenty-one in the middle there. And you can see where we've gone up and down, um where we gained uh five percent in two thousand twenty from two thousand nineteen. We've gained in two thousand twenty-one, and um we will gain another two percent in two thousand twenty-two. The challenge with this small amount of gain is that typically um the cost of providing services in it is in excess of this. Uh when we look at the Bureau of Labor Statistics, um CPI changed from the year twenty um twenty to two thousand twenty-one or um December twenty nineteen to two thousand twenty, I guess, um is showing about two point seven to two point nine percent. So everything is increasing in cost and expectation, and yet our revenue stream is increasing at a slower increment than those those things that are increasing in expense. Uh so we do still have some challenges ahead, but um we do believe that we have a healthier budget to bring to you um as we start preparing two thousand twenty-two. Think that's our last slide. Am I correct? Oh, I forgot this one. All right, so this kind of gives you this a a big overview. That's why I put that airplane on there. Uh really high level still, uh we're still working with departments on the personnel budgets and on operations, and we'll be bringing you uh more information soon. But our revenues, if they come in at about fifty-nine point three million dollars, the um the rest of what you're seeing is based on an exact duplicate of two thousand twenty-one's budget. So if you were to do everything that you did do in two thousand twenty-one and change nothing else, that was fifty-seven million dollars. In essence, what we have remaining after increasing revenues or estimating revenues is about two point three million dollars. Um and we're hoping that that is going to be able to be applied um towards the changes in expenses for the next year. Um and that's only about four percent, so um it's pretty slim, but um but it's better than where we've been. So we're we're very optimistic and um pleased with the work that we've done so far. So we're, we're very optimistic and pleased with the work that we've done so far. And we believe that we'll be bringing you a, a strong mayor's budget. Any questions about the information?
So when you're talking about personnel, that's bringing back the raises, the steps, the.
That personnel number you're looking at right there is if nothing happened.
Okay.
You paid today, what you paid them yesterday or tomorrow.
Okay.
That's why that 2.3 is there. So that's what we've heard from our department heads and we've heard from council that that's our priority. And we believe that that 2.3 million will be able to take care of that, but that will not leave a lot of extra room for wiggle. Okay.
Excellent. Thank you, Denise. Wonderful presentation. It gives us a good starting point. We're going to have Denise present at pretty much every other meeting, I think, going forward. Giving us just some sneak peeks into the budget as the, as the executive departments prepare those and, and bring those forward. So we're excited to, to kind of stay on top of it and get an early, an early jump on this. So thank you very much. Anybody else have anything for the workshop before we?
I do for Denise, please.
Oh, go ahead.
So Denise, when, when you answered Melissa's question, it was yes to steps? It was yes to pay raises?
Yes, that we believe that the 2.3 million dollars can be, will be applied to personnel costs.
Including steps?
Right, including steps.
The 42 million, 42 and a half million shown on this slide, just on that personnel line does not assume that those are putting back in. That assumes that we are leaving everything flat the way it has been for the last fiscal year, for the last six months. And then the, if, if we do put those back in, they have to come out of that 2.3 or some other revenue source.
Exactly.
And will that, will that 2.3 allow to bring back any employees' positions that are needed that, that went away?
Our early estimates say that there'll be a very, very small amount of money remaining for us to do much of anything else. We've had some, some preliminary information come in that is showing that we have some operational increases that are out of our control with.
We just lost Denise's audio. Hang on Denise. What just happened there?
Okay, am I back?
You are back.
Great. We have received some information that's still preliminary that we have some expenses that were unexpected out of our, and out of our control. So services that we outsource that have increased a lot, quite a bit. We're still working on it with, with those contractors. But that was going to probably take the majority of it. I, I would not be able to say with strong confidence that we will have much money left to add positions back into the budget and accomplish what the council and our department heads have recommended at this point. But we're still developing. This is very, very early budget stages. Any other questions? The work that you did last year was really hard. It was. The work that the mayor did, the work that you did was hard to do. But it has put us in a place where we are sitting like this. I don't know if you read the Journal article, but we were asked, when was the last time the city had a balanced budget? Because at the budget amendment, you adopted a balanced budget for this year. I went back to 2012 and I could not find a balanced budget during all that time. So that's over a decade. You've done good work. You've done hard work and the, the city staff has worked harder than I think they've ever worked this last year because we did have to remove so many positions. But we've gotten there and I'm hopeful as we move this forward.
Awesome. Thank you for that, that presentation Denise.
Thanks.
With that, if nobody else has a comment at this point, we will, adjourn is not the right word. We will recess. Oh, new business. Sorry. Gosh. We will not recess yet. New business. So this is a quick high-level ordinance, ordinance preview of what's coming up. I just looked at the screen and the word ordinance was there. Preview of what's coming up in the next couple of meetings. We have Town Center at Copper Rim is just going to be looked at. That is the commercial portion of the Copper Rim development on Mountain View and 78th. We're going to be looking ordinance 2105, looking at alcohol licenses.
I make a comment on that one.
Sure.
Just, just so for everybody, I went through 2105 the other night pretty heavily and I talked with Rob and I spent some time with Duncan today. What you see in your packet may not be what we're actually going to deal with next, next time. We need to make an immediate change on, on an issue that's going on in Jordan Landing. But the, as, as I went through it and we talked with Rob and Duncan, we may want to have a more in-depth discussion on alcohol-related businesses and where they ought to be located. And a couple other things. So i- if, if you see the changes on that one, understand that it's more of a stopback gap measure to fix one issue we're having with the state law. And then it'll give us a chance to review the entire ordinance and get it right. So we don't have to piecemeal it over the next few years.
Thank you. Yeah, some good info there. That's going to be, it's going to be an interesting discussion. 2106, we're just going to tweak the code around electing council chair and vice chair. As you saw the process, how we had to go through and everybody had to announce if they were running and then everybody had to announce if they weren't going to run and then everybody had to, anyway. We're just going to clean that up a little bit, make that a little more user-friendly.
So Zach, if, if we have some ideas on that, can we give them to Alan?
Absolutely. Yeah. Chime on, chime on in.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And then the Big Ben Project, looking at a contract deed and conservation easement. So there you go. That's a sneak preview of some stuff that's coming up. Any questions on that? Feel free to reach out to, to Alan or myself or whoever. Any of the names shown here. And with that, I'll give you five seconds to raise your hand if you want to say anything else. Okay, time's up. We'll go ahead and recess until 7:00 PM when the regular quote unquote city council meeting will reconvene. And on the screen now is a couple of ways to join. You can join on the computer. On the Zoom, there's the meeting ID and the password shown on the screen. If you want to speak in the citizen comment period, which will be shortly right after 7:00 PM. So if you want to get in here, get in here quick. And then there's the phone numbers on the screen as well. Pick your favorite ways to join there. And you are welcome to join us here in the chamber. So far, nobody has, but you are welcome to. We'll be live again at seven o'clock. We'll see you then.
Thank you. These are my peeps. Right here. Nicely done. We reconvene the City Council meeting of February 10th. Once more, we have all seven council members in attendance. We're also joined by Mayor Dirk Burton and our CIO Corbin Lee is online as well, as well as some other staff members. Welcome one and all. Nobody has joined us in person yet, but you can now if you want to. Oh, except for, we got a couple of staff members and our sergeant, yeah. Okay, there are people sitting there, however, they are not the general public. General public, you are invited to come join us, so we'd love to have you. You're also welcome to join us on the Zoom meeting. The link is on the agenda. If you are watching streaming online, by the way, I was informed that we had a streaming issue at the beginning part of the workshop with our YouTube link. We're sorry about that. We, we have been recording the whole time though, so when the recording, we will post the entire recording, so you can catch up on anything that you missed. And that should be up within the next day or two. With that, we will go ahead and move to the Pledge of Allegiance. And we have our Scout Leader/Mayor Dirk Burton to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To do this, as you may know, the Boy Scouts turned 111 years old.
His mic is on now. It wasn't at the very beginning, but it is now.
Did you hear me?
I heard you. I'm in the same room.
Okay, I'll proceed. Will all the audience that is in this room and also those who are remotely wherever you are, please stand and place the flag and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you, Mayor. And you look sharp. We will proceed to citizen comment. This is the portion of the meeting where you can speak to us, the council. The public can address the City Council on any topic. There are no public hearings tonight, so this is the one and only time to speak. If you are dialed in on the phone, please press star nine now, just one time, if you would like to address the council. For those of us that are in person, if there was anybody here, I'd say, come to the microphone when I call you up. If you are on the Zoom, please click the raise hand button you see there at the bottom of the screen. It's, it looks like you want to give somebody a high five, hit that button. When you have pressed star nine on your phone, I will call on you and then you will need to press star six to unmute yourself so we can hear you. And I gotta pull my windows back up here. Okay, it looks like we do have a couple of people who are waiting to speak online. Let me hit this one first. Our first speaker, you will have three minutes. Let me get to the, the rest of what I was gonna say. Excuse me one second. Here we go. When you are commenting, please state your name and know that you have three minutes. And I do want to say that we are striving in this meeting to create a respectful and professional decorum during our council meetings. It's our desire that each person attending or listening to a City Council meeting feels safe, respected, and comfortable participating in their government. We hope that commenters will have that same goal and strive to do their best to keep comments respectful, professional, and free from profanity, personal attacks, and indecency. So with that in mind, now let us go back to the list of who would like to speak, and we will go first to Alexandra E. Framo. Give it one second. Go ahead and push star six and you should be able to unmute yourself and speak and you will have three minutes.
Hello?
There you are. You are live and you can speak. Thank you.
Okay, this is Alexandra E. Framo. And I just want to say that it's a privilege to have three minutes for a citizen comment during council session. But I want to say January 13th was probably one of the worst days of my whole life as far as the council was concerned. I want to say council member Worthing said I was lying. And I want to say again, I never ever called you a name. So that is the truth. If I have a Bible, I will say, but for you to say that I'm lying in front of everybody during my three-minute meeting was absolutely devastating to me. And also, I just want to say, I pray, I pray that we do not spend $5 billion on remodeling City Hall. People are out of work and we have the COVID. We have so many issues in front of us. And to say that we're thinking about $5 billion remodeling for the city center, I just want to say I'm a trillion percent against it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Go ahead and reset that. And we have Jamie Yautz. I hope I said that correctly. You should be able to go ahead and unmute yourself and the time is yours.
Hello? Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Yes.
Awesome. Thank you. Well, my name is Jamie Yutes.
And my name is Brian Yutes.
He's my husband. We just wanted to, first of all, thank you for letting us comment. We wanted to make a quick comment and description on the ordinance number 21-05 in the council agenda. Um, so we are approaching the council in regards to the proposed city code amendment concerning businesses and alcohol licensing. So we are a new business in West Jordan and we are operating as an instructional art studio. We teach painting classes and offer a variety of educational type art classes for all skill levels. We're hoping to add an additional service to our studio, which includes education about the production, consumption, and qualities of wine and beer. And this would be presented in the form of a wine tasting class. So this would be a great complement to our current art culture and our services. As we currently operate in the Jordan landing, we neighbor at least two other restaurant-type businesses, which also offer alcoholic beverages. And we believe our wine tasting classes will be an appropriate addition for both our location and our efforts to remain competitive in our industry. We are one of the only art studios in West Jordan, and we're proud to be the business of art entertainment. So in order to do this, we are required to apply for the appropriate licensing through the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control. There is only one license type that our business can qualify for, and that's the Educational Special Use License. This particular license requires regulated portion control and curriculum standards, which we'll have in all of our classes concerning the wine and beer. Their screening process also requires local consent from our city government. And as it stands today, there's no current codes for the specific license type, as well as other new licenses, even though there are several other cities that acknowledge these license types, including for our competitors. So we know there's some in, in Murray and South Jordan and Park City. All those have the same type of allowance for that license type for other painting studios. We would just love to see West Jordan fall in that category and have the current standards of licensing types. So yeah, we are grateful for all your assistance and hope to see more growth and prosperity in our local business community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and well timed.
We practice.
That item, by the way, will be a public hearing next meeting, so you will have one more opportunity to speak to that once the actual ordinance comes out. I don't see any other hands raised in the Zoom or online or on the phone. If anybody else would like to speak, this would be your time. Go ahead and raise your hand on the Zoom or hit star nine on your phone. And I'll give whoever's still online a couple of seconds here. All right. Well, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the citizen comment period. And we will move forward with reports to the City Council and start with the council office report, which would be by Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. It's good to have everybody, well, some people here or a few people here in the council chambers. It is open to the public, as Council Chair Jacob has said. We're working with a new technology that has been installed in the chamber to facilitate the City Council meeting to anyone who desires to participate via technology or chooses in the future to come and participate here in council chambers. I want to report to the City Council that the general plan committee has been met, met, meeting. They have, they went through 191 potential questions for a survey. They whittled it down to 15 questions. And as of the beginning of tonight's council meeting, there have already been 112 responses to that 15-question survey. And residents who are listening this evening can participate in that survey by going to westjordan.utah.gov/westjordangrowth. And we're hoping to get several hundred more participating in the survey during the month of February while it's live. And then the general plan committee will review those questions and update the city's general plan, which was last updated in 2012. The last thing that I wanted to just mention to the council is that we are getting more people, more residents and interested individuals following the City Council page on Facebook and Twitter. On Facebook, it is facebook.com/westjordancitycouncil, all spelled out. And on Twitter, it's twitter.com/wjcitycouncil. And we encourage residents to, to follow us there. And that is the report for this evening. Thank you, Council Chair Jacob.
Thank you, Council Director Anderson. City Council reports. Is there anybody on the City Council that would like to report on what you have been doing in your various committees and/or assignments outside of this meeting? I'm seeing a lot of head shakes. Nobody, nobody. Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick report that the Committee for Utility Budgets met. We shared some feedback and thoughts with Denise. We expect that to be incorporated into the budget. You'll be seeing more soon. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Green.
It was yesterday, wasn't it? Yesterday, the Committee on Land Use met. We discussed a couple of items. We discussed a little bit about Bowman Zero. We discussed a little bit about industrial standard, or yeah, design standards for industrial areas. That one will be a kind of a slow-moving project. Right now, it's not anything, but we want to be proactive, so that one will be coming up shortly. And Alan, what was the third one we talked? Oh, and then there was a, there was a potential rezone that on Redwood Road that we talked about, and that one will go to the Planning Commission first and then come back. So nothing earth-shattering, but just as a heads up, there will be a couple of things coming in the future. But we want to get the industrial design standards right, so, and just relook at them, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Vice Chair Green. Councilmember Worthing, I see you're unmuted. Did that mean you want to speak or no?
I have my hand up. Can you not see it?
I, oh, you know what? The hand icon on my screen is almost the same color as the wall behind your head.
Ah, oh, sorry.
Well, you're good. Go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, um, so a couple of things with events. You should have all received an email for March's events, typos and all, so I'll throw that out there. So as far as February goes, we have got a very special day coming up, so there'll be some surprises of showing love from council members, so we watch your Facebook and you'll be able to see some posts coming out next week. Of course, President's Day is on the 15th. Random Act of Kindness Day is on the 17th, and I would just encourage everyone to, not that you don't do this every day anyway, but go out and do something nice for somebody else. Maybe leave a little note on someone's door just to brighten their day or give a phone call to someone. Love Your Pet Day is on the 20th. So just give your pet a little extra love or post some pictures on our city Facebook page would be great. Also, we have Officer Reese Remembrance Day on the 23rd. And there'll be some posts on the city website is, excuse me, Facebook page as well. As far as March goes, you guys, like I said, should have received an email with all the events. We'll talk more about that as we get into March. And we are looking for volunteers for Take a Walk in the Park Day. So if any of you can do that, just go ahead and email me and let me know. The walk will be at 7:00 PM in the evening, and so citizens will be encouraged to join us. As we take a walk, obviously with social distancing in there throughout several parks in the city. That's more to come on that. With the Jordan School District, they had their meeting last night. West Jordan High is currently on virtual learning until February 16th due COVID cases. They talked last night about their, they have a higher-than-usual percentage rate of students with failing grades. They believe that's due to virtual learning and an unstable in-person learning, seeing several schools have been forced to go virtual on and off. They also discussed an update on graduation options. Several options for this year are a virtual graduation that, from what the discussions were, doesn't seem to be favorable. A school parade. I know there were several of those last year, and students seemed to really like that. There was a very positive response on that. A school parade. I know there were several of those last year and students seemed to really like that. There was a very positive response on that. Possible in person with smaller groups. And also they discussed photo day gifts, senior gifts, yard signs, T-shirts and a firework show. I'd encourage you to go to the Jordan School District's website and look up the school board. You can check out the meeting, the minutes in the meeting there. As far as our Chamber of Commerce goes, they have got lots of different things going on right now. The Legislative Affairs Committee, they meet twice a week. And then they also are part of the legislative roundup, which is on Saturdays at eight o'clock in the morning. Anyone is welcome to join those. So all of us, any of the citizens, if they want to just listen in. I find it fascinating because you get to hear about the different bills that are being presented. And this really focuses on the West Side and it's from people that represent us here on the West Side. Also, I'll just give a little plug while I'm talking about that to the Doug Wright Show, Sunday edition. I watch that every Sunday and currently during the legislative session, he's got some great information and great guests on there that talk about the bills that they're representing. So it's very good information to watch that one. The, on Tuesday, February 16th at noon, Chamber West is having a professional development series with an update for, from Washington DC and questions and answers with Senator Mike Lee. I sent you a link to the registration if you're interested in that. And then also on March 9th at noon, there's a Women in Business Professional Growth Series. And Denise Hufftelin from the president of Salt Lake Community College will be speaking. If you haven't had the opportunity to go to something with Dr. Hufftelin, I would very much suggest you do. She's a great speaker. And I, I've enjoyed learning and listening to her. So that's all I have from my committees.
Thank you. You are a busy person.
I just take a lot of notes.
All right. Awesome. And we are going now to the Mayor's Report. Mayor Burton.
Thank you, Council Chair Jacob. And thank you, Council, for permitting me to lead the pledge of allegiance at the start of your meeting today. I appreciate that. I put on my uniform so I could do that as a scout leader because the Boy Scouts birthday is in February. In fact, it was Monday. They turned 111 years old. So I appreciate that privilege and opportunity to do that. Well, fortunately, I have a lot of help from Tony to help me through this political season, but there have been an uncountable amount of meetings that we have attended in these past few weeks. And lots of changes are going. It's been a lot, a fun roller coaster ride. I've enjoyed it quite a bit. And Tony has been on keeping up on that. So I'm going to say almost that report for her to give to you. But I will mention that I appreciate the opportunity of the council signing the priorities for the transportation for West Jordan through the Western Growth Coalition, which I think is really important for our city to get our east-west transportation moving up the bracket a few slots. And I'm thrilled to tell you that there was an active transportation letter that I signed, which Tony has sent you a copy of. I'm hoping that you will sign it as well to put it out there that lets our legislators know that we are interested in active transportation as well. Take a moment and take a look at that. If you have any questions on that, I'd be happy to address that. And I was pleased the Macy's had their ribbon cutting and there were some council members that came and attended that. Thank you for coming to that. The growth of the existing businesses in the city is as important as new growth that comes, as you heard during your work session today. I've been continuing to volunteer to help with the vaccines. I actually do lots of different things, but the main focus I've been doing is rescheduling second appointments for the people who come and get their first appointments for those that are 70 plus. But the county was very good and set up a vaccine station at the West Jordan Senior Center here for one day last week. And they went out and used their drivers to go out and pick up our residents who were above 70. They didn't have a way to get out here by themselves and brought them out, provided the vaccine for them and gave them right back. And there was a great opportunity to spend the day at the senior center, meeting with several of our seniors and some other places as well. Earlier this week, Brian took me on a tour of the work they're doing over the water tank. And you've heard his report on that and been getting to see that in real life and what the problems that were there that were caused by the earthquake and the repairs they're doing. And it's exciting to know that we have fantastic people in our water department, in our public works department, who are watching out and making sure that our residents are getting cared for with our water. And that's all that I have at the top of my head. Are there any questions?
Any questions for the mayor going once? All right. Thank you, Mayor. We'll go ahead. Proceed to the CAO's report, City Administrator. That would be Corbin Lee. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Over the last two weeks, we have been we've been handing out the manager of the year and the employee of the year awards. Normally we would hand those awards out at our holiday luncheon, but that didn't occur this year due to the pandemic. And so we went out, the mayor and I and the president of the Employee Association and handed out the manager of the year and employee awards in person. I want to just mention to you who they are. So as you see them or interact with those individuals, you can congratulate them on the award. This will also be mentioned in the employee newsletter later this month, but we had three who were selected as the employees of the year. These individuals were selected by the Employee Association Board after a screening process by department heads. For our employees of the year, Officer Mike Jones in the Police Department, Brandy Jamison in Public Works and Tom McComey in the Water Division were the employee of the year recipients. We had two managers, the managers of the year award winners. Jared Smith, our risk manager and emergency manager, and our street crew supervisor Jerry Street. So if you see any of those individuals, please congratulate them and please share with them your acknowledgement of their accomplishments this past year. With that, I'd like to, if I may, turn the time over to Tony for the legislative report and for her to give you a report on a few things happening in community engagement.
Corbin, before you do, I was writing that down, but I didn't get the third employee because I couldn't write fast enough. What's the third one?
Sorry. The award winners for the employee of the year were Mike Jones in the Police Department. And I'm going to email all this to you in the written CIO report. But Mike Jones in the Police Department, Brandy Jamison in Public Works and Tom McComey in the Water Division. And the managers of the year were Jared Smith and Jerry Street. Jerry's in our Streets Division and Jared Smith is our Risk Manager and Emergency Manager.
Thank you.
Thank you. If I, if I may, turn the time over to Tony and that's all I have for the CIO report this evening.
Thank you, Corbin. I'm going to start with a few items from community engagement before moving on into our legislative update. I am very, very excited to let you know that the city has formally entered into a contract with a vendor to redevelop our website and build us a new site. The vendor selected was Love Communications, a local agency based in Salt Lake City. And we have our first meeting with them to start on the path towards creating a new site set up for next week. Really excited about that. Just to provide you with an idea of the timeframe, we anticipate that we'll launch the new site. We may do a soft launch a bit earlier, but we'll have a launch of the new site toward the end of the fiscal year in June. With that, we're looking to launch some additional tools. As you know, Denise's department is working on the electronic payment system, which will really push at that time as well as two services that when we did our survey of residents a year or so ago to ask them about how they'd like to receive communications from the city, the, the highest responses were email and SMS texting services. So we are looking into both of those options and I think things look good for us to be able to add that to our our online capabilities as well. And so we're moving forward that with that. I know you guys are anxious to see something new, just as we are. And then we'll just kind of keep you posted as we move through, through that. In addition to that, we are working on some printed publications. I just want to note that you are going to start seeing some inserts in the utility bills, some stuffers in the utility bills pertaining to important issues with the city and our events, as well as we're working on an activity guide that will be mailed out to all West Jordan households. And there is a slight difference between our utility bill households and our full household list, about five, it's about five to 6,000 households different. And that will go out to all households and we'll kind of detail all the activities through early fall that the city will be undertaking. I also want to let you know that we are moving forward with public meetings on both 1300, the Environmental Impact Study for 1300 West and for 7800 South. The 1300 West meeting will be held on March 11th. And the 7800 South Environmental Impact Study meeting will be held on March 18th. Both of those meetings will be held online and the time is still to be determined. But those will be evening meetings and we'll make sure to get that information out to you. Any questions before I move on to legislative update? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and move on. There are a couple of issues.
The 7800 South, is that the 7800 South Environmental Impact, is that the area, the expansion of 78th between like the Roundabout and Mountain View Corridor? Is that what we're talking about?
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I knew what part of 78th we're talking about.
Thank you for clarifying. Sometimes I take it for granted that everybody just knows exactly what I'm talking about. So I appreciate that. Looking, looking forward to some of the legislative issues. I did send you an email earlier today that some of you may caught with an updated tracker. There were a few things I called out in, in the email that I'd like to expand on. The first is the passage of House Bill 244 sponsored by Representative Donegan. That bill was a transportation bill. As part of that bill, you, you may, you may remember a couple of weeks ago when I talked about this, West Jordan was not on the radar in that bill. There was no special legislative funding for West Jordan incorporated into the original version of the bill. I'm going to tell you that the strategic move we made to bring Lincoln shirts into a more prominent position has definitely paid off this year, not only with Salt Lake County, but in his work on this bill, we have gone from a zero dollar allotment to an allotment of $1 million a year for the next 15 years. That bill has passed the House. It has gone on to the Senate. So at this time, I'd really encourage you to reach out to our senators, one of whom Senator Harper is the sponsor of the bill, as well as others that you may have relationships with and encourage them to pass House Bill 244 because that would be new revenue to the city for our Streets Department. And I believe, and Denise can correct me on this, but I believe that we can use that 15 minute, $15 million in funds to bond against for, for projects as needed. So a huge boon to the city and very, very excited to report to you that that went from zero to a million dollars and then it has passed the House. I think you can see, you know, just the, the results of us taking a more active role at the legislature last year and this year. I do want to talk, do you have any questions about that one before I move on to some land use legislation? Okay, I do want to talk for just a minute about House Bill 82, House Bill 98 and Senate Bill 164, as well as the, the Senate Bill 61, the billboard bill. All of these are development related bills. Senate, House Bill 82 is the ADU related bill that did pass the House on Monday, the House. Yes, that went through a committee and through the House on Monday. Sorry, I'm trying to remember my dates. We are still working with the sponsor of that bill to work with him on perhaps including more of an enforcement arm as well as special circumstances for cities that maybe are college towns or have unique circumstances like a large percentage of affordable housing. We'll continue to work on it as it goes through the Senate. But it is going to pass in some form or another. You can see the current language through the link in the tracker. If you have any feedback or anything you'd like us to take a closer look at or consider, please let me know and I'm happy to reach out to the representative. And we've already talked to our senators, both of our senators about that legislation. And House Bill 98 is the
Real, real quick on
Yeah.
Has there been any movement at all on Donegan's substitute on that bill? I know Donegan had a lot more local control on his.
Yeah, that substitute failed.
It did. Okay.
Yes, it did. So most of that language came from the league. We have a small work group that's been working on this bill pretty diligently. We're still going to keep working on that language on the Senate level and, and may we may be in a friendlier environment there than we were in the House. I'll kind of keep you posted on that, but right now it looks like the real opportunities we have to make any further adjustments will likely be in enforcement, which is, which is very important. So House Bill 98 is the inspections bill. I know we've talked a lot about this and there have been a lot of concerns. We have been notified as we met in small groups with legislative leadership that this bill is going to be a priority for them and they do anticipate it passing this year with their support. So there is a group in, there is a group from the league that is working on this one. I'm not working on this personally, but I'm working to stay updated. They're working to make concessions and some hardline negotiations. And there should be a new version of the bill, I'm hoping, that comes out in this next week. And once I have language on that, I will send that to you. I think it's going to be a painful bill either way, but we're trying to soften the blow on that because at this point we do believe something is likely to pass. Senate Bill 164, I sent you some information on last week. There are some definite concerns with this legislation. Most of those concerns, well, I'm going to take one step back. One of the concerns that we have about this legislation is that it hasn't actually been approved by the Affordable Housing Committee. I, I believe most of it was written by Ledge Leader, Ledge Research with a heavy influence from our friend, Mr. Gambreless. We have some real concerns with this bill, particularly surrounding the fee section. And if you haven't had a chance to review that, I strongly encourage you to do so. The reporting and fee structure reporting that they're asking for us to provide or they would ask for us to provide as a part of this bill would probably result in the hiring of at least one, if not two, new employees in finance and development services. So it has a hefty price tag for the city. One thing that we've really tried to point out to legislators is there's really nothing that ties these fees back to affordable housing. The way the fee system is structured, these fees are paid upfront. By the time there was any reimbursement to the builder, the home is likely to have been priced and sold. So it's unlikely to result in any savings to the, to the homeowner. On the flip side, if the cities were asked to bear the cost of this heavy-handed mandate, it would likely result in a need for more staffing at the city level as well as more reporting, which ultimately could impact the, the cost to the homeowner through property taxes or increases that needed to be passed to cover that. So I encourage you to look closely at that. We're going to continue working on that with the league. And as a city, we'll be heavily, heavily involved. But I don't think it's too early for you to start reaching out to legislators and talking to them about your concerns within the bill. Again, I sent you an outline of some of those concerns last week, but I really think the fee portion is the most difficult for us as a city to swallow. The last bill that we're really working on hard this week is Senate Bill 61, which is the billboard, the billboard bill. They have come close to many of the suggestions that our working group has provided. So I think we've made some good headway there, particularly with the understanding that legislative leadership really wanted to see this bill through. Senate Bill 144 is much more heavy-handed and it's, it's still out there and there are many serious concerns with it. But I think we've gotten past most of the really, really big outstanding issues with 61. I think we'll have some draft language. Um, I think we'll have some draft language tomorrow. If you're interested in seeing that, please let me know and I'm happy to send you. A copy, otherwise you'll see an update on that in our next legislative tracker. And that really completes the bills that I wanted to highlight for you. If you have any questions about. Any of the bills that we've been tracking or or anything you've seen or heard from the Hill, I'm, I'm happy to answer those for you at this time.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Tony Barker? All right, thank you for that update. We look forward to.
Thank you.
All right, uh unfinished business reports. Oh, we've got four things that are hanging out there right now on unfinished business. Um, we've got the hillside zone text amendments. Um, we should expect to see that when the uh MDA comes forward for. One of the ranches, uh Wood Ranch, I can't, I get the ranch is mixed up. Um, design standards for industrial zone, Councilmember Green touched on that already. Um. The commercial vehicle. Storage, um. Don't know when we're going to see that one again, hopefully soon. Tentatively scheduled for sometime early this year, which it is now early this year, so. There you go, and ADUs uh as we've been over, staff is working on an updated ordinance, which may be all for not. If the legislature keeps going down the road that they seem to be going down. So there's uh quick updates on unfinished business. Any questions on that? Excellent, I love no questions. All right, moving right along, business item five A, we have a report. From our city treasurer, our new city treasurer relatively speaking, Mr. Aitken Tyler. Let me get you promoted here. So that you can speak. Sorry about that, I'm usually. More aware of what's coming up, so give it one second here and you will be able to present. Your report, there you are. Whenever you're ready, go ahead and unmute and you're good to go.
Hey, uh, let's, let's turn on the video as well, how's that?
There you go.
Okay, good evening, everybody. So my name is Tyler Aitken and I'm the city treasurer here. Um, I actually began my career at the city in two thousand seventeen in the police department where I served as the budget coordinator for the department. Uh, last year I was hired as the city treasurer in an interim capacity until September when the move was made permanent. Uh, I'm very grateful to serve the citizens of West Jordan, hope to bring some updates to the treasury, to the treasury role. Um, next slide, please. So the Treasury Division uh of the Administrative Services Department is comprised of four primary duties. Utility billing, debt issuance, revenue and investments and money management. So as treasurer, I manage the debt service uh for bonds the city currently holds and will manage any future debt issuances. Uh, the treasurer tracks the revenue received by the city and ensures that it's accounted for appropriately and manages the city's investments. And make sure that we have enough cash in the bank to pay our vendors and payroll expenses. Uh, however, today we are going to focus on the utility billing division of the treasury. Uh, the utility billing division is responsible for the monthly billing of water, wastewater, solid waste, stormwater, streetlights. And any special assessments. Uh, West Jordan has roughly twenty eight thousand active residential and commercial utility accounts to build each month. Uh, and we have three wonderful utility representatives that I have the pleasure of working with who support and care for all of these accounts. Today I wanted to give you an update um on our utility shut off program and let you know about some of the positive changes that have occurred. Uh, I would also like to highlight recent updates to our util- utility bill printing and mailing. Along with the redesign of our utility bill. And finally, I'll share some exciting news about future online payments and the different options citizens will have to pay for city services. So. This is probably the least fun topic I have to speak about, given the current pandemic circumstances. Um, but I felt it's important to keep you informed. Uh, before July of twenty twenty, the city had not performed shut offs for nonpayments since October of two thousand nineteen. Uh, the previous administration followed an unwritten policy to not shut off residential water accounts during the winter months. Um, I'm sure they had their reasons for following this unwritten policy, uh, but City Code does not support it. Uh, beginning in November and usually ending after February twenty eighth, homes were not shut off for nonpayment. Uh, this meant that when shut offs resumed in March, some accounts had accumulated up to seven months of delinquent utility payments, right? Four winter months plus three um. Some uh summer months, which should have been shut off in November, but were not. Uh, for a family that is struggling to make ends meet, recovering from seven months of delinquent utility payments is a tough pill to swallow. Uh, when stay at home orders were announced in March of twenty twenty, the city made the decision to further suspend utility shut offs for a time to help families struggling with the effects of the pandemic. However, it soon became apparent that simply not demanding payment for services uh was not the best way to help our residents. Uh, restrictions on cares funding made it so that we cannot, so that it cannot be used to replace lost revenue. Uh, including fees for service like utility bills. We also looked to the utility hardship fund, but found that this account had been overspent and was actually upside down. Uh, this meant that these accounts that were already up to seven months behind would eventually have to pay their bills in full, since it's not sustainable for the water fund to simply write off. Uh, the delinquent debt. The decision was made to resume utility shut offs. Uh, delinquent letters were sent in June to one residence and utility shut offs resumed in July of twenty twenty. Uh, when utility shut offs resumed, there were some accounts that had not made a utility payment for nearly a year. And many others that were delinquent for six months or longer. Uh, this is where I really have to hand it to our three utility representatives. Uh, because in addition to sending delinquent letters to our customers, they reached out via phone calls. And emails to try to get as many customers as possible to pay before shut offs resumed. They made hundreds of phone calls and helped residents who couldn't afford to pay, pay all at once, get on affordable payment plans. Uh, even though utilities weren't being disconnected, utility billing continued to send delinquent letters to our customers. Uh, despite the effects of the pandemic, unemployment or underemployment in some cases. There were nearly fifteen hundred fewer delinquent letters sent in twenty twenty than in twenty nineteen. Uh, I attribute most of this decrease to the strength of Utah's economy and the resilience of its people. Uh, but I believe a small part of this trend could also be attributed to West Jordan following the written policies in City Code. I want to be sure to recognize uh the support of our city council and mayor uh who have supported our efforts to collect on these delinquent accounts. Uh. I know uh you have likely been contacted by residents looking to have their account debts forgiven. And I appreciate your support and and as you've encouraged our customers to pay their bills on time. Um, I especially want to recognize Mayor Burton, who has personally visited the homes of customers to help them create a payment plan they can afford. I, I'm a firm believer that following the city's code related to shut offs is more helpful than making exceptions. Uh, it is easier for a customer to recover from a delinquency of three months or less than to let them dig a hole too deep to get out of. And I'm happy to report that the number of weekly shut offs has stabilized. Um, to between anywhere between twenty five and forty uh per week. And that the number of exceptions that I'm being asked to grant each week has drastically decreased, so I count that as a win. Uh, now before I move on, I would just wanted to ask, are there any questions about any of these numbers or anything I've, I said?
Any questions either at this point? All right, keep going, keep going.
I'm hearing none, I'll move on. Okay, so now on to the fun stuff. Uh, previously, our utility bills were printed in-house, uh which required a lot of staff time and effort. Uh, to fix and troubleshoot printer issues, babysit the printer, replace toner cartridges, wait for service when the printer broke down, et cetera. There was no way to track a bill or a delinquent letter when a customer said they didn't receive one. And we didn't receive updated mailing information when someone moved or updated their address. Meaning in many cases, people didn't get their bill because they hadn't let us know their updated mailing address. So in May, we began the RFP process to get a new printing and mailing vendor for our utility bills. We wanted a vendor that could reliably send out bills, you know, even in the event of a natural disaster like an earthquake, for example. Um, and let us know of address changes via the National Change of Address Service provided by USPS. And help us redesign our bill. Uh, Data Pros won the RFP process and after an implementation process began mailing our bills and notices in December of twenty twenty. The company's primary location is in Coppola, Texas with a backup location in Oxford, California. Uh, they've been wonderful to work with. And have checked all the boxes we required in the RFP. Staff can look up a PDF copy of any customer bill or notice. Which is stored online for two years. Data Pros has been a reliable partner and we're very happy to be working with them. So not only did Data Pros take over the mailing and printing of our utility bills, but they also helped us redesign it. So once again, I have to give the credit for this amazing redesign uh to the utility billing representatives. Uh, they worked with Data Pros to meticulously redesign the entire bill both front and back. The previous utility bill was a template out of Munis with very little room for customization. The bills were one sided, plain black, plain black and white bills uh that customers found difficult to read. Uh, the old bills were functional, but weren't very inviting, intended to overwhelm people. Our new bill is bright and colorful, uh with each service being summarized under its own colorful icon. Uh, the usage graph now reads left to right, which is much more intuitive than the old right to left, black and white graph design. And the current month's usage has a different color to help customers easily identify their current water usage reading. We've had many phone calls from residents who are looking at their bills for the first time and like what they see. Uh, we've received a lot of compliments on the new look. Uh, I, I don't know if I should admit this, but we've even had some customers find errors in their bills that they hadn't noticed before because they'd never looked at their bill. Uh, to teach people how to read their new utility bills, the Communications and Events Department created a helpful walkthrough. That they posted on the City Hall Facebook page. I was following the post to see what kind of uh feedback we might get. All the comments, both of them, were positive and there weren't any negative comments posted. I consider this a win since for every positive comment, there's at least a hundred uh people that didn't comment. Um, right now, all of our printed bills are in this new format, but customers who receive email bills are still getting the old bill format. Uh, however, that will be changing soon. Uh, in August, we started the RFP process for a new online payment vendor and from that process, Invoice Cloud was selected. Invoice Cloud will start the online payment, will start as the Online Payment Center for Utility Bills. But will expand to become the online payment processor for all online services the city provides. Currently, the city only accepts Visa or Mastercard. Invoice Cloud will allow us to expand the available payment options to also accept all major credit card brands, including Visa, Mastercard and Discover. Digital wallets like Apple Pay and Google Pay and app based payment methods like Venmo and PayPal. Once a customer has created an account and input a payment method, they will have the ability to sign up for payment via text message as well. Customers will be able to view two years of invoice history and sign up for paperless billing, something that is currently unavailable with our current vendor. When Invoice Cloud comes online, the emailed bills customers receive will match the printed bills. Invoice Cloud excels at helping people transition to their online payment portal. Our hope is that this new tool will reduce the number of payments the city takes by phone. Uh, and which will free up staff time for other assignments and projects. We anticipate e-payment adoption and paperless bill enrollment to increase drastically. Invoice Cloud will help the Communication Department with community outreach to help inform our customers of the change to our online payment system. Uh, the system will also make it easy to contribute to the utility hardship fund by putting the donation option directly in the payment path. Uh, which will help utility customers who are struggling to make their payments. Uh, we just signed the contract with Invoice Cloud and we look forward to beginning implementation very soon. Uh, and with that, thank you for the opportunity to present to you this evening. Uh, there is a lot going on in our utility division right now and I'm excited to present the enhanced services to you today. Um, I would welcome any questions now if you have any.
I don't have a question, but nice presentation, great job, thank you.
Well, thank you.
And it looks like now Councilmember Pack is first to raise his hand for a question.
Well, thanks very much, Chair, and thanks for that great presentation, Tyler, and for all of the staff that contributes to. Making it such a wonderful experience calling in. Uh, just to cut a question and a comment. Is that I quite af- quite often have to call in, um especially recently, I have, uh. Well, for years I've had a rental here in West Jordan. And recently the tenant has mentioned, gosh, I, I didn't think I was behind on my, on my utility payment. Why, why, why do you keep calling me? And for some reason, um, the duplicate bill stopped generating back in October. So just a thought may to perhaps maybe check that out. I don't know if that's happened with, with other residents. Where usually I would get a duplicate bill if the bill wasn't paid. But it, but it turned out that for some reason I, I was just the sole person getting it and so. He, he hadn't been getting it for a while, so I think we, we, we fixed that and and I filled out a form and, and so we'll get that duplicate bill going to him. And wonderful to be able to have residents be able to pay via phone or online or call in. And I know I've mentioned this to Denise a couple of times, um with that new process, do we anticipate that additional forms of payment will be? Be able to be used instead of just Visa and Mastercard? Would we have Discover and um American Express and?
We would, we're going to add Discover Card. American Express is so expensive to service that we weren't anticipating adding that. Um, and and we weren't really interested in that one. Uh. But we can always revisit and look at those fees and see if it would be worth it. American Express has just traditionally been very expensive to accept and so. With enough other payment options out there, we, we were going to exclude American Express. The option is there with Invoice Cloud. We were actually opting to not accept American Express, though.
Okay, thank you. And I assume debit and direct transfer from checking and savings accounts would still be?
Yes, ACHs and scheduled payments, all of those things will also be an option uh on Invoice Cloud.
Wonderful, eh, different strokes for different folks and the more options that we have for people to feel at home and. And comfortable, that, that's wonderful. Thanks so much. And also Mayor Burton making personal visits to uh to help residents. Thank you.
That really impressed me when he came into my office and said, hey, I spoke with so and so.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilmember Green and then Councilmember Whitelock.
Uh, a couple of questions. Um, I, I'm trying to figure out, most of these big companies now. Uh, at least were, at least with the big company that my little store deals with. Uh. American Express costs me the same as Visa, and so I'm wondering why. Uh, Invoice Cloud would be saying that. Sorry, the American Express discount fees would be higher. Um, so it's, cause, cause like I said, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of credit card companies out there that mer- you know, that take cards from merchants that are. Uh, charging uh almost, like I said, in my business, we're, we're paying the same for American Express as Visa, so just something to. That makes me wonder. My, my big question is with going to some of these online things, are we getting to the point where we can eliminate? What I'm going to say, eliminating a bunch of the bureaucracy with business licenses and those kind of things, my que- and here's the question. Um, I had to, I had to renew my chicken license. I had, and and I've got a business license, it's got to be renewed. I had to redo my chicken license. It cost money for the city to send out an envelope and the bill. And then we wrote a check and sent it back in, and I'm sure that something will, you know, and and on the business license, it's a rental. I get the bill, I send it back in and then I get a license. Are we looking at anything that says, look, if I go online and I pay my money and I click yes. It just generates that business license in some sort of PDF format so that we're. And I get my bills by email and those kind of things to eliminate all those mailing costs and all that other, are we looking at that?
Yeah, mailing is one of the most expensive portions of sending out utility bills. Um, I, I'm looking so, I'm so looking forward to moving people to the online uh, to the email bills, because it's just so much cheaper than. Uh, sending them through the mail. I can't speak exactly to, to the plans of uh. Uh, business licensing and what they plan to do as far as, you know, adjusting their paper bills. Uh, but I can speak to the payment side of that in that uh when we wrote the RFP for Invoice Cloud or for the online payment system. We included in there that we needed them to be able to communicate with um. The New Economic Development Program, City Works. Um, and so Invoice Cloud should be and will be the online payment system. And so Invoice Cloud should be and will be the online payment system for that so that we're not mailing checks and things like that through the mail. And that, that would be available online.
I can speak to that briefly. That is part of the plan and it will merge together and be done online as well. So yes.
Cool. Thank you.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Thank you. Tyler, my questions are these. How are we going to inform residents about this new option for them to pay? And the other is kind of a question. Informational admonition, you take it however you want, but not everyone in our community has computers or smartphones. Mrs. Ifremo does not. And so there will still be a need for paper billing, in my opinion, because not everyone has those things and not everyone's going to want that option. So how are we handling those two items?
So the current payment options for people are not going anywhere. If people would like to come into City Hall and pay, they can still do that. Or if they'd like to pay over the phone, that will still be available. What this does is it offers more payment options for, for a lot of our customers. And the more payment options, the better, right? The more options we give to people, the more methods they can pay, the better. So it's not going to change that. And we know that paper bills will never go away entirely. And so they can, getting an email bill is something they'll have to opt into. We're not going to automatically opt anybody into something like that. If they would like to receive it, they can. If they don't, we will continue to send them that paper bill and that won't change for them.
Okay. And then I don't think you told me how we're going to let people know about this option of paying online.
Thank you. I didn't. We are, we're in the process. We'll be starting implementation on the system soon. And then I'll hear more about and I'll have more information on how we're going to be transitioning and helping get the word out. But Invoice Cloud has a transition or a, a public information team that will help us to market this new tool and things. We also probably plan, we'll probably be offering some promotions and things to help people transition over to the new, to the new system. You know, we don't, we don't know exactly what that's going to look like quite yet, whether it's a, you know, a discount on your bill or, or some, or a drawing of some sort. We'll see what we end up doing for sure, but we'll be getting the word out probably in the utility bill itself, as well as an online marketing campaign to get the word out that this is coming.
Okay. And you, you know, you do have six, seven council members and a mayor that can also help get the word out if we're informed.
That's really good to know. I'll be sure to keep you informed and maybe give you some instructions.
That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for our city treasurer? All right. I am not seeing any. Thank you very much for the presentation and the updates. There's some fun stuff coming down the road there. So we appreciate that. Speaking of roads, okay, not really. Speaking of adjusting service boundaries, let's move to item 5B on the agenda. This is a joint resolution declaring intent to adjust a service boundary. This is Resolution 21-004, declaring an intent to adjust the boundary of the Kerns Improvement District within West Jordan City. And this will be Scott Langford. And Scott, you are up and ready.
Ready to go. Thank you, Chair. Counsel, it's good to see you tonight. As introduced, this is a resolution that declares the city's intent to adjust the boundary. Alan has prepared some illustrative slides that show the area. You'll recall that back in early December of last year, there was an update or an amendment to the interlocal agreement that we have between the city and Kerns Improvement District. And that was anticipation of, of this actual changing of the service boundaries. You'll see that this particular area from the slide is west of U-111. It's associated with the current Woods Ranch proposed development. It does not include all of the Woods Ranch area, but just the, the appropriate pertinent sections that need to be served. Served meaning water and sewer from, from Kerns Improvement District. So this is the legal description of that area. And you can see that, again, it doesn't include everything, but it's still nearly 270 acres up in the foothills there. And the main reason why we're, we're in favor of this, Counsel, is that due to the gradient topography, it's just, it proves very challenging to serve this area in an expedited manner to facilitate development. So again, tonight, the resolution before you is just to declare the intent to change the boundaries. And you can see the timeframe here, per state law. It requires proper noticing, of course, and, and a certain amount of time between meetings in order to meet those, those code requirements. So tonight, February 10th, Counsel considers adopting the resolution to adjust the boundary. We've got to do some noticing coming up. It's our intent, if the Counsel adopts the resolution tonight, that we'll bring this back as a public hearing on the 14th of April. And from there, you can see the next steps through, through the end of May up to, to the potential certification by the Lieutenant Governor's Office to change the service boundary. So Jared Ting has done a lot of work in corresponding and communicating with the Kerns Improvement District, as well as Corbin Lee. And we'd be happy to entertain any questions that you may have. But I'll turn it back over to you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Langford. Any questions for Scott at this point? Oh, a hand went up. It's Councilmember Whitelock. You're muted. We cannot hear you.
Because I didn't unmute. Sorry. If no one has anything, I'll give you a motion, Chair. Are you ready?
We're ready.
Okay. I move to, behalf, I move to consider joint resolution of the Kerns Improvement District declaring an intent to adjust the boundary of the Kerns Improvement District within West Jordan. It is Resolution 2021-02-01.
Hang on, can you repeat that resolution number? Because that's not what I'm seeing.
It's the one on my.
Council Chair Jacob?
Yes, sir.
There's, there's, Kerns Improvement District adopted a resolution, which is part of the resolution. The correct resolution is Joint Resolution Number 21-004, which includes the Kerns Improvement District Resolution, which is what Councilmember Whitelock had indicated.
Right, which is, which is our resolution.
Okay, so, so Resolution 21-004.
I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Whitelock and a second from Councilmember Worthen. Discussion to that motion, Councilmember McConaughey.
The motion made was to consider Joint Resolution 21-004. Should that have been a motion to approve rather than consider?
I think it probably should.
I would, Council Chair, I would recommend that.
Let, let me rephrase.
Okay. As Chair, let me go ahead and we will wipe the table from that motion. And Councilmember Whitelock, go ahead and give it another shot.
Okay. I move we approve Joint Resolution Number 21-004, declaring the city council's intent to adjust the boundary of the Kerns Improvement District within the West Jordan City.
I will second again.
All right. Now we've got a resolution or a motion about a resolution from Councilmember Whitelock and a second from Councilmember Worthen. Discussion to this motion. Anyone at all? Ms. Quick.
Thank you. We'll start with Councilmember Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Chair Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Pack?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
And Councilmember Worthen?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you, Counsel.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Langford and Counsel. We will proceed to Item 5C on the agenda. This is considering Ordinance 21-04, amending the 2009 West Jordan City Code Municipal Form of Government Revisions. This has Duncan's name on it. You should have all received an email on this with detailing what all the revisions are, as well as the link in the packet. I should have it as well. Does anybody have any questions? Hang on, let me pull a remote, Duncan. Sorry, I'm a step behind tonight. I apologize. Allow Duncan to rejoin us here. There he is. All right. Let's start off if there's any questions and then we can have Duncan summarize for us. Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Chair. I actually didn't have any questions. The packet was very helpful, very clear. So if there isn't anything, I'm ready to make a motion when the chair is ready.
There is one typographical error, Chair, that I would recommend that we correct as part of any motion.
Let's go first to Mr. Murray.
So line 468, it's the heading to Section 1-10-17. The heading says papers and that should indicate documents instead of the word papers to match up with the wording in the, in that section. So I would recommend just that one word change in the heading on line 468 from the word papers to the word documents.
Thank you for that. That is a important sign of the times that it is now that documents aren't just on paper anymore. All right, let's go to Councilmember McConaughey.
All right. I move to approve Ordinance 21-04 and also, and also correcting any Scribner errors that may exist.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember McConaughey, seconded by Councilmember Vice Chair Green. And discussion to that motion. And we'll go to Councilmember Green.
I just wanted to thank Corbin or Mr. Lee for helping clean this up. And then as, as I talked with Mr. Murray, a couple of sections popped up. And you can see that as we walk, as we work through a couple of those sections, we deleted a lot of extraneous stuff. And so I think this is a good step to clean up the ordinance, the ordinances. And so I just wanted to thank Mr. Murray for all of his help on particularly some of those sections in 1-10, where we deleted a lot of, I'm going to say nonsense and got down to the, what we really needed. So thank you.
And I would indicate to Mr. Chair and Mr. Vice Chair and members of the council that there are other members of the legal team, including Dave Quailey, who assisted with specific issues within their areas of expertise. So.
Thank you. Any further discussion to the motion? Looking at the online participants, the people in the room, seeing none, let's go to a vote.
Thank you. Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Chair Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Pack?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
And Councilmember Worthen?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you, Duncan and everybody else who worked on that. That was, that was awesome. Proceeding to consent items, 6A. This is approving minutes from the last couple of meetings. Ooh, I don't know who was first. Look for a motion for the consent calendar. First one to speak.
We can't count. I'll give it to Councilmember Green for the motion.
I was just going to move to approve Consent Items A, Consent Items A, 6A.
I'll be happy to second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Green, seconded by Councilmember McConaughey. Any discussion to that motion on the consent items? Seeing no hands raised, Ms. Cindy Quick.
Thank you. Councilmember McConaughey?
Definitely aye.
Councilmember Pack?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Worthen?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Chair Jacob?
Yes.
And Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes seven to zero.
Excellent. I like saving consent for the end. It likes us and on a nice, happy unanimous vote regardless of what else was talked about. Last item on the agenda is remarks. And as the Chair, I'm going to take a second of personal privilege and remark first. And I have something here, which is a gift. Surprise, surprise. This is a recognition, a small item of recognition. For those of you on the screen, I'll hold it up. It's a box. But it is not for me. It is for our outgoing or past Council Chair, Councilmember McConaughey. This is a little thing that the council leadership and office decided to do just to recognize you for your service for the last, last year of, of chairing the council. We would not be in the position we are in, especially technology-wise, pandemic-wise, if you had not been Chair last year. I can honestly say that I'm really glad I lost that election last year because if there had been no pandemic, I'm sure I would have been fine. But taking the hurdles that, that we all saw and that we all kind of lived through and experienced. Yeah, I was not the right person for that job. You were. So congratulations, or thank you, not congratulations. But this is a, it's a gavel, little ceremonial gavel, and it's got a little plate on it that says that Chris was the council chair last year, basically is what that says.
Thank you. And as a token of my appreciation to the council, I will say thank you and leave my remarks at that.
And we appreciate. Any other remarks before the end of the, the adjournment of the council of the remarks? Councilmember Worthen?
Yes, I would just like to give my weekly shout out and I hope he is still here. He looks like he is. This is from a resident. I want to share this, just a shout out to Scott Langford. We had a resident or I had a resident that reached out to me about a concern that they had about a street that they lived on, some questions from the past. Won't get into the complete details of it, but she, she said that Scott was amazing and very kind and explained everything to her. And she understands, you know, where she's at and what she needs. And she very much appreciated you and your excellent customer service. So very much appreciate that, Scott. So you get my shout out this time and I appreciate you and all of your staff for doing the work they do. But she was very happy with the response and the fact that you did call her back on follow-up. So appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Worthen. Get more remarks or, all right, Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Chair. Just, I wish this were on a more positive note, but I want to share our condolences and love with the family of Greg Nicolash. We had the, some of us here had the opportunity to work with him while he was at West Jordan City. And he made some significant contributions. He was always great to work with. Took a lot of time with me personally, helping me come up to speed when I first joined the city council. There are a lot of land use issues and a lot of, a lot of background behind what's happened over the decades. And he was so very good to, he was just so very good to the city in so many ways. Our hearts go out to his family. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And I'd echo that. He was one of, I think he was the planning administrator, the zoning administrator. When I started on the planning commission in 2013, worked with him for about two years, year and a half to two years. I know Scott knows him well, worked very closely with him during that time as well. Yeah, that was a shock to see that come up on our social media. Any other remarks for the close of this meeting? I will accept a shouted out motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
You have a crystal ball slide.
Oh, oh, wait, 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 wait.
Motion withdrawn?
Motion withdrawn, hang on.
Second withdrawal.
I have withdrawals myself. From adjourning. Crystal ball. This is the crystal ball, maybe slightly counting. Council should be familiar with this. We are trying to send this out every week to y'all as the agenda tracker for what's coming up. You can look at February 24th really quick to see what's what's on the agenda here. Most of this we covered when we talked about new business. Just keep an eye on the spreadsheet and let us know if you have any questions. Obviously, we put the names on the spreadsheet of who each item belongs to. So if you have questions, for example, on Copper Rim Town Center, please get ahold of Scott. Or concerns or whatever, you know. Obviously, if it's agenda related, get ahold of me or Alan or Vice Chair Green. And with that said, the crystal ball has now been revealed. There's your schedule for upcoming meetings, anchor just about every other week. Now, I'll take a motion to adjourn, Councilmember McConaughey.
A move?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn by Councilmember McConaughey, a second barely by Councilmember Worthing. This is a non-debatable motion. Call it in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Want to bet? Motion passes. We are adjourned.
Good night, everyone. Happy Valentine's Day.
Bye.